Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Good evening. I would like to open the session for the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, April 24, 2023. It is 6:00 PM and we are in the Falmouth Select Board meeting room. And I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with AFSMI Unit C.
So moved? A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call?
Brown, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zelinski, aye.
Taylor, aye. And we will return to open session. Good evening. I would like to call to order the open session of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, April 24. It is 6:30 PM. And the Board is returning from an executive session where we discussed strategy with respect to collective bargaining with AFSMI Unit C. And the Board voted unanimously to support a memorandum of agreement between the Town of Falmouth and AFSMI Local 1636, Unit C. I would ask that you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would ask that you please silence your cellphones. And if you are audio or video recording this public session, please notify me as the Chair. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to recognitions. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got an email from Ed Valeriani, former employee at the Parks, excuse me, the Mechanics Department at the DPW. And he asked me to remember Harry Hill, his friend who he worked with there. And Harry was a 41-year employee of the Falmouth Parks Department. He passed away on March 31st. And Harry was a member of 1960 class of Lawrence High School in Falmouth. And upon completion, he was employed at Webster's Rose Garden in Quissette for a number of years prior to his employment with the Town of Falmouth, Department of Public Works, Parks Division, which spanned an amazing 41 years. In those years, he was responsible for preparing, painting all the lines on the fields for football, soccer, lacrosse, and field hockey games. And always said he was doing it for the kids. Every year during the holiday season, he was in charge of setting up the Christmas display at the Village Green in Falmouth Center. And he even designed and built some of the decorations over the years, one of which was the Silver Hill Train that was built by both Larry Silva and Harry Hill. Ed says, "Harry was such a great guy. I worked side by side with Harry for 26 years as a DPW Parks mechanic." Ernie Holcomb, career Mullen Hall PE teacher and FHS coach, also worked with Harry early on at the DPW. And Brian Dale, Parks Superintendent and Tree Warden, worked with Harry for many decades. And someday, Ed says, he would like to see a field name in Harry's honor. But we'll save that for another day. So thanks to Harry for his work and our condolences to his wife, Virginia, and the family. And thank you for your service to Falmouth.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other recognitions? Announcements?
It's not quite an announcement. I just want to let people know, when emails come to the Falmouth Select Board, we do read those, but because of open meeting law, we can't reply back to those other than to let you know that they've been received. But I want to let people know that that's why you only get replies from one Select Board member. But the Chair and I meet with the interim Town Manager about every week, and we do go over emails that have come in. If there's any action items, we make sure those are passed along appropriately. Thank you.
And I have an announcement. And I know that we will be talking about Dr. Betsy Gladfelder later tonight, but I just want people to know that it was announced on Friday that for her Kuna Mesut Restoration Project, she has been officially awarded two grants. One in the amount of $1,525,000 from USFWS, US Fish Wildlife Service, for one grant, and the other one is for $1.6 million from NOAA.
Wow.
So it's pretty amazing. Congratulations to Betsy Gladfelder. Okay. Any other announcements from the Board?
There's some chairs left over. You got people out there. You might want to buy them in.
Does anyone want to come in? We do have some seats left if anyone wants to come in and sit.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Okay. We will move on to public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters, not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. And since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board may not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. Is there anyone here for public comment? Mr. Doobie?
Richard Doobie, Precinct 6. Good evening. Article 21 in April's warrant book was approved by town meeting. Calls for $50,000 to be allocated for consultant services to conduct independent review of one or more departments. The Select Board will determine which department or departments will be chosen for review. I would like to recommend that the Board select the Falmouth Police Department for review. With the new chief, new Town Manager, the policy of selling AR-15s to Falmouth Police Department officers, and the new use of less lethal shotguns, the department would seem to benefit from such an independent review. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doobie. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay. We have a few minutes before we can do our hearings. So I would like to take under business, I think I'd like to look at number one. Mr. Johnson-Staub, I'll ask you to start, please.
Sure. This is an application for a change of manager. It has been, sorry, for the Falmouth Yacht Club at 290 Clinton Ave. The application has been reviewed for completeness. No concerns were raised. I recommend approval. I don't know if the manager from the Falmouth Yacht Club is here, and she is.
Oh, perfect. Come on up.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. We took you out of order and threw you off.
I've never done this before.
Anything you would like to say to the Board or any questions that the Board has?
No, but the background check is scheduled for May 3 at the Police Department.
Could you just introduce yourself?
Ariane Damon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the Board?
I would just say that I guess if our approval is voted tonight, that it would be contingent on the completion of the background check.
Okay.
And I do have one question for the Board.
Yes, please.
So I just want to ask you that you understand that any alcohol issues that arise at the property, you would be personally responsible with your manager position.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else from the Board?
I'd move approval, contingent on the background check.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We still have time, so I think I will move on to the consent agenda and take it out of order because we cannot start our hearings until quarter of. So I will go through, at least through, the licenses on the consent agenda and please stop me and hold if you have any concerns. And Mr. Johnson-Staub, is there anything you would like to say prior to reading?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We've confirmed that the Class 1 license to buy and sell motor vehicles sought by the Flying Bridge Marina can in fact be limited to boats only, and that the license cannot be transferred to another location. We have modified the license form so that it will be clearly written on the license that it is for boats only. All the other licenses are routine in nature and have been reviewed by staff for completeness. And I recommend approval of the licenses. I do want to comment on one of the administrative orders. Under Item D, the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution seeks approval of a license agreement to access Sitters Pond via the park behind Town Hall to place a pontoon in the pond which will contain water quality testing equipment. The pontoon would be moored in the southern end of the pond from early spring through late fall, and they're seeking to do this for three years. Placement in the pond would be by crane. The Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution would be responsible for repairing any damage to the grass. We did ask them, require them, to notify the abutters on the southern end of the pond so that they would be aware there would be a mooring out there because the pond doesn't normally have any moorings. And we have not received any complaints about that.
Okay. So I will go through licenses on the consent agenda. Please notify the Chair if you choose to hold one. Application for a Class 1 license to buy and sell new and secondhand motor vehicles, boats, Flying Bridge Marina LLC, DBA, Flying Bridge Marina to be exercised at 250 Scranton Ave in Falmouth. Application for a Common Victrol License, ICA Pizza LLC, doing business as Simply Divine, located at 271 Main Street in Falmouth. Application for a change of officers of an all-alcoholic beverages common victrol license, 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC, doing business as the 99 Restaurant and Pub, 30 Davis Straits, Falmouth. Application for a special one-day Walt and Wine and Malt Beverage License, West Falmouth Library Annual Art Show, 575 Highway, West Falmouth, Friday, 7/21/23. Application for a special one-day Wine and Malt Beverages License, Sarah Anus for Mayflower Brewing, 5 Kuna Mesut Farm, 277 Hatchville Road, East Falmouth, Saturday and Sunday, 5/6 and 5/7, 2023. Application for a special one-day Wine and Malt Liquor License, Michael Clark, Live in the Dream Beanbag Toss Tournament fundraiser, Conference Table Parking Lot, 205 Worcester Court, Falmouth, Saturday, 5/13/2023. Application for a special one-day Wine and Malt Liquor License, Luke Vos, Crooked Coast Banshell Marina Park, Saturday, 8/5/2023. And an application for a Sunday Entertainment License, Barnstable County Agricultural Society, Barnstable County Fair, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, Sunday, 7/23/23. Okay, I'm going to go on to administrative orders because we still have time. Vote to approve warrant for the annual town election on May 16, 2023. Vote to authorize the extension of temporary outdoor seating approvals from April 1, 2023 to April 1, 2024.
Madam Chair, could I just comment that the state authorized not only the outdoor seating but the takeout alcohol provision? That be included in this as well?
Mr. Johnson-Staub?
So that's a, right, it's a separate matter that, you know, is available to all alcohol pouring, those, all entities that have an alcohol pouring license.
So that's a state regulation that would still be granted to them if they choose?
Right.
Thank you.
See, vote to designate elected members of the Falmouth Municipal Light Plant Board as special municipal employees for the purposes of the Massachusetts Conflict of Interest Law, MGL 268A, Section 1N. Approved license agreement authorizing Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution to access Sitters Pond. Authorized grant application for lead service line inventory. Vote to accept donation from Stephen and Nancy Weinstein in the amount of $500 to the Falmouth Fire and Rescue Department, with our thanks. Vote to accept a donation of two Samsung flat-screen TVs valued at $2,500 apiece to the Falmouth Recreation Department.
Can we give some pre-advertising to the donor on that one?
H, vote to accept the FY23 Wellness Grant in the amount of $600 from Cape Cod Municipal Health Group to the Personnel Department grant account. And then on your consent agenda also, which we don't need to read each one of because they are duly noticed in the, in this agenda, the license renewals, 2023 seasonal and annual. Correct?
Right.
Okay, so no one held anything from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to move the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board?
Do we know the name of the donor for the TVs?
Don't.
No.
Maybe next time we can, if we find out, mention it. That's very nice of them, whoever it was. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to move the consent agenda. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me take that out of order. And we have three public hearings tonight. And our first public hearing, do we have people here from Simply Divine to represent the applicant? Okay, I need one. Come right up. I'm one minute early, so, but come up. Are we good? All right.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that ICA Pizza LLC, doing business as Simply Divine Pizza Company, has applied for a transfer of an all-alcoholic beverages common victrol license in Alteration of Premises located at 271 Main Street, Falmouth, MA. There has also been an entertainment license application submitted. A hearing will be held in the Selectman's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, April 24, 2023, at 6:45 PM on the above application. Per Order of Select Board publication date, Friday, April 14, 2023, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson-Staub? Did you want to make any comments about the licenses?
Just very briefly, the application for transfer of license and alteration of premise has been reviewed for completeness. No concerns were raised by staff, and I recommend approval.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Nick Amblyodis, and I'm an attorney practicing law at 246 Andover Street, PBD, Massachusetts. And I'm here on behalf of ICA Pizza LLC and Bronco Peshev, the principal of the LLC and the proposed new manager of record. This is Mr. Peshev, who's also here as well. So we're here seeking approval for a transfer of an all-alcoholic beverage license for a restaurant tavern from JNV Ventures LLC. Mr. Peshev has been in the restaurant business for in excess of 20-plus years. He's run restaurants in Cranston, Rhode Island, in Maine. He has a, currently has a pizza place in Provincetown. He used to have the Pizza Wave in Marston Mills. So he has a long history of running great restaurants in the New England area. And he has now moved to Falmouth and has made Falmouth his home, and he's going to be operating the Simply Divine Pizza Place. He does not anticipate any changes in the restaurant. He's going to operate it just as it's always been operated. The hours of operation are going to remain the same. The only reason we've applied for an alteration of premises is because the premises was expanded a couple of years ago, and it was on record with the Board of Health, but the liquor license was never updated. So we've now done that, or applied for that, and hopefully that'll be approved. And Mr. Peshev is here, and we're here to answer any questions or concerns that the Board may have regarding this application.
Questions from the Board? No, it looked very straightforward to me. Okay. I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Do we need public comment?
Yes, I do need public comment. Anyone here to speak on public comment regarding this application for the license? Okay. So we have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much.
Wait, no, we just closed the hearing. Give me one more. Okay. Any discussion amongst the Board?
No, I think they've done all the due diligence. They've had the architects submit the letter for the seating plan, and we've got the plan in place. I don't see anything that's missing. I would recommend approval.
Second.
Or move approval, I should say.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the application. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Second hearing.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140, Section 183A of the General Laws as amended by Chapter 299 of the Acts of 1926 and amendments thereto that ICA Pizza LLC, doing business as Simply Divine Pizza Company, has applied for entertainment license located at 271 Main Street, Falmouth, MA. A hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, April 24, 2023, at 6:45 PM on the above application. Per Order of Select Board publication date, Friday, April 14, 2023, Falmouth Enterprise.
Mr. Johnson-Staub?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there was an entertainment license for this establishment previously. Entertainment licenses cannot be transferred, so this appears as a new entertainment license, even though it has, there has been one at this location in the past. I just wanted to clarify that. The application has been reviewed by staff for completeness. No staff concerns were identified. The premises has limited space for entertainment. And I would just mention there are residences in close proximity and also a number of other entertainment licenses in this area.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson-Staub?
So we're simply requesting that the restaurant be allowed to play recorded music in the restaurant like it currently does. And on occasion, particularly during the off-season, he may have some, like a guitar player, acoustic, between four and nine during the week as an additional feature of the restaurant to drive some business. The landlord and the lease doesn't even allow for live music, so, other than, it does allow for acoustic. So that would be the only, that would be the only entertainment, it'd be just the recorded, pre-recorded music, radio, and then on occasion, a guitar player would come in and maybe play during the off-season in a small, or a piano maybe, or a piano player. Small piano.
Questions from the Board regarding the entertainment license?
I think these hours are reasonable.
I would agree, four to nine is pretty reasonable. And I looked on your plan, and the stage you indicated is kind of squeezed in between the bar and the table, so it's not going to be a big band there.
No, it's not going to be a big piece band there, for sure.
We have no intention of doing that.
Okay.
Any other comments from the Board? Comments from the public regarding this application for an entertainment license for Simply Divine? Okay.
We did, we did see one email.
We had one email.
Person voicing concern. And just, please be advised that whenever we, if I could, Madam Chair.
Please.
Whenever we have entertainment license, we do have a policy that the music should not transfer beyond the property line.
Right.
Even though that may be not always practical, but that's the goal.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Look.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, we just closed the hearing.
Oh, sorry.
Again, we did this again. Close the hearing.
I'd move, I'd move approval of the application as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now you're good.
Now you can go.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amendment that Falmouth Cappies Inc., doing business as Cappies Cappies Inc., doing business as Cappies Fine Wine and Spirits, located at 21 Spring Bars Road, Falmouth, MA, has applied for a transfer of an all alcoholic beverages retail package store license and pledge of inventory license and stock. A hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, April 24th, 2023, at 6:45 PM on the above application. Per order of Select Board publication date Friday, April 14th, 2023, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, stop.
Thank you. This is an application for transfer of an existing package store license and pledge of inventory license and stock. The application has been reviewed for completeness. I recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. And for the applicant?
Sure. Good evening. Attorney John Merady and Democas Law Offices. With me is Sunil Kumar Patel and Mateusz Patel. We're here for Falmouth Cappies Inc. and request an approval of the transfer of the package store license at 21 Spring Bars Road. Falmouth Cappies Inc. is buying the liquor store, and we're seeking approval to transfer the license, approval of Sunil Kumar Patel as the manager of record, and approval of the pledge of license, inventory, and stock to Northern Bank and Trust Company as they're financing the transaction. There'll be no changes to the operation. There'll be a liquor store hours 8:00 AM to 11:00, Monday through Saturday, 10:00 AM to 11:00 on Sundays. We're not changing the footprint or doing any alterations to the premises. There'll be about 10 to 12 employees. There'll be TIPS certified. Sunil's TIPS certified as well, and they use an ID scan to help check IDs to combat underage drinking. Lastly, Sunil is experienced in alcohol sales as he was a manager at a store in Quincy with a beer and wine license, which he sold last year. So with that, that's the request before the board. I'll welcome any questions, excuse me, you may have.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Any other liquor interests in Falmouth? The corporate members or associates?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, any other questions? Any comments or questions from the public regarding this application for Cappies? Okay. Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion amongst the board?
I see no reason not to approve it. Everything seems in order.
One thing. Sunil did meet with the police officer last week. We're just waiting for the results to come back for his town background check, so.
Okay.
Make that contingent on Mr. Brown's motion. You're in the middle of that, right?
I was just going to say I would move approval unless there's any other concern.
Contingent upon?
Contingent upon the background check, yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck with the new business.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so we will move into the presentation on the water main replacement plan. Mr. Johnson, stop. Do you want to kick that off?
Thank you, Madam Chair. While, do we have the yacht club first?
We did that. We did that already.
Oh, that's right. Excuse me. Sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brown. I threw a curve. I took that out of order because I had time to use.
Thank you.
The presentation will address the condition of the town's water mains and propose a plan to begin a systematic replacement plan. This is the first of several planned agenda items related to this topic. This presentation will address the need and the cost. At your May 1st meeting, we will have a presentation of a water rate study that will illustrate what portion of water operating and capital costs can be covered by existing rates and a water rate increase the board might want to consider to fund these costs. We have tentatively planned a water rate hearing for May 22nd. The board may well decide that the water rate hearing should be continued over two meetings, given the importance of the issues and cost implications for rate payers. At this meeting tonight, we seek the board's input on the proposed water main replacement plan, and the discussion of the water rate implications can be addressed at a future meeting. And with us tonight, we have Mike Rigetto, who is our interim water superintendent, and I will let him introduce the rest of the team.
Good evening. Mike Rigetto, Acting Water Superintendent. With me is Ryan Neeland. Ryan works for Tatum Howard. They're our consultant for the water department. Peter McConity, Director of Public Works, Steve Kateret, Deputy Director of Public Works, and Steve Rafferty, who everyone knows, former water superintendent and now town and Falmouth consultant. So tonight, we are going to review a capital efficiency plan. The water department hired Tatum Howard to complete this plan. It's basically an overview of all the water mains in the town, and we're getting into it. So this first slide on the top, those are actually all pictures in Falmouth, and this kind of shows the difference between what happens at, like in the middle picture up top, you know, midnight on New Year's Eve on Main Street versus what you can plan to do, you know, in terms of traffic, you know, disruptions to the roadway, and, you know, just costs. This is a picture of a recent water main break on Minot Road, Minot Road at the intersection of Oak Grove Avenue, and on the left you can see the asbestos cement pipe. There was a failed coupling right before the tee, and this, and you can see there's a gas main also running right over the water main. So in the middle of the night, the crews had to cut out the entire intersection and rebuild it. This is another one from a couple of weeks ago. This is right in front of the Sea Crest Hotel. This break happened right on the side of the roadway, but it ended up taking out an entire driveway. So it took about three to four days for the staff to, you know, we had to remove the whole driveway, you know, keep everything in order, fix the water main, and then put everything back. So it takes up a lot of time when we have planned work for the week. Tuberculation in pipes. You can see on the left, that's an old unlined cast iron main. And on the right is a newer style main with the cement lining you can see on the inside. So over time, without the cement lining, you get corrosion inside the pipe, and it reduces fire flow and water quality, whereas the newer pipe with the cement lining, you know, the water doesn't interact with the, with the steel or the iron, and you don't get that tuberculosis. So these are some recent projects, you know, the town's done. We do do water main work in-house. We have a really experienced crew that does really good work, but it's just not enough. We can't do the day-to-day operations of the water department and also replace a lot of miles of main. So getting into the CEP. The CEP is a planning document for us to prioritize how we're going to replace water mains. The goal is to spend or appropriate roughly $3 million annually, and what that will do is that will allow us to stay on track. Another factor with that number is affordability, but also contractor availability. It's, it's hard to get contractors that are qualified and good at this work on Cape Cod. They do exist, but they're, they're busy. There's sewer going on in every town, and there's a lot of water work going on. So if we can appropriate $3 million, whether we spend it in that year or not, that would be, that would be beneficial. You know, if we don't spend it one year, we'll do a bigger project the following year. So now Ryan, who did this report, will jump in.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening. My name's Ryan Neeland. I'm a project officer with Tatum Howard. So I'm going to go quick, the abbreviated version of the, the capital efficiency plan for purposes of time. But to start, what we do is we come in, we collect all the data for the existing infrastructure in the town on the existing water mains. So what are the sizes of the water mains? What are the materials? How old are the water mains? So we collect all that data as our starting point, as our baseline, and that's kind of what, what you see here. This, this slide and the next slide has a couple pie charts on it. This first one shows materials. Important parts to, to show you here, on the right side, you can see that 39, in the green, 39% of the existing system is asbestos cement water main. And then the red there, 10%, unlined cast iron, and the orange, 4% wrought iron. So these two categories, about 50% of the water mains in the system, and there's about 385 to 400 miles of water main in the Falmouth system. So you can see half of the system is this AC main or cast iron. AC is a problem because, as Mike indicated, we're seeing a lot of failures at joints with this AC main, causing water main breaks at inconvenient times. And then the cast iron is a problem because there was a picture that Mike showed side by side, an old main that was tuberculated where you could see the, the diameter of the pipe is much smaller because of corrosion and tuberculation over time versus a nice clean cement lined ductile iron. So you can see about 50% of the system falls into those two categories. But also important to note on a good note is you can see on the left side, you have ductile iron pipe, 21%. That's, that's what we want. We want good new ductile iron pipe in the system, and also the purple plastic PVC HDPE. That was sort of a popular pipe, and it's used frequently today too, but that was installed a lot in the 80s in Falmouth, and that's a good pipe. It's held up for many years. So that's material. And then this slide shows diameter. So we talk about pipe size. 29% smaller than eight inch. The MAS DEP stands for MAS Department of Environmental Protection. The standard main size that you want in the system is eight inch. Anything smaller than that becomes a problem in terms of delivering the proper fire flow if there was a fire in the system and you needed to open hydrants. So you can see 29% of the system falls into that smaller than eight inch category. So I'll jump into the plan real quick. We collected all that data to get our baseline materials. Our approach in this capital efficiency plan, we look at three circles. We call the three circle approach. We first look at hydraulics of the system. So you got, you have water going to your customers. We look, do customers have the proper pressure? Is there enough flow in the system to meet these fire flows? That's the big hydraulic question. We go out, we do fire, fire tests, fire flow tests in the system. We collect this data. We populate it into this hydraulic model that we develop, and we, it's called calibrating. We calibrate the model to show that the flows in the model match what we see in the system when we do these flows out there. So that's the first step, hydraulics. And I'll jump to this. This is the hydraulic slide. This is the first circle. So like I said, we conduct the flow test. We do this, develop this model. We get all this hydraulic data, and then from that, we can provide recommended hydraulic improvements throughout the system. So these areas of your system are deficient. You need to upgrade the main to something bigger in order to meet fire flows in these areas. So that's, that's sort of circle number one. Second circle, we look for the critical components in the system. Now, a main's considered critical if it's a main that's directly connected to a water source or the water treatment plant, or a pump station or tanks. You can see that those are critical mains to the water system. We also look at customer-related mains to whether or not they're critical, like a main serving the hospital or schools or municipal buildings. Those are considered critical mains. So we, we identify those as critical mains in the system. And then we also do a criticality evaluation, which is sort of this middle bullet, where we break every main in the model in the system, and if greater than 1% of the customers of the demand in the system is affected by breaking that main, then that main's considered a critical main. And then the third circle is sort of the asset characteristics of all the mains. So we look at material of the water main. We look at the, the pipe size. We look at the installation year. We look at the soil conditions. Is it in, is it on rock, or is it in good soil or corrosive soils? Is there a frequent break history of the mains in that area? So those all go into this asset circle, and we actually give a score to every single main in the system. The higher the score, the more likely it is to break, the lower the score, I mean, the lower the score, the, the better the pipe is in terms of asset characteristics. So those are our three circles, and ultimately, we come up with recommended improvements based on those three circles. Any main that falls into all three circles becomes a phase one recommended improvement. Essentially, it falls into the hydraulics. It's a critical main, and it has poor asset characteristics. So it's considered a phase one recommended improvement. Any main that falls into two of the circles becomes a phase two recommended improvement, and then anything that just falls into one of those three circles is considered a phase three recommended improvement. And that's how we, we come up with which mains are more important to go after first in terms of replacement in the system. And I'll turn it back over to Mike, but that's just kind of the quick summary of the CEP, and you can see some of the, some of the information associated with the phase one and phase two recommended improvements here that I'm sure Mike will touch on.
Thank you. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware that this plan, even though it's published on our website now, is not, you know, it's not set in concrete as an order of operations. This is a living document. We'll review it and update it annually, and we're also looking to coordinate with things such as sewer projects, gas main projects. The DPW's going through pavement management, so we'll be coordinating with that as well. This touches into it. So basically, our, our plan is to start with phase one and phase two, and on this slide, it shows us where we currently are. So last year, we received ARPA funds for water main design, so we, we signed a contract to design our first four projects, and we recently just executed another contract to use the remaining ARPA funds to design additional streets. So this lays out basically our goal going forward would be to start construction in 2024. So in summary, I, I just want to hit on that. The town has spent a lot of money and a lot of time on the treatment aspect of this, of this town. We've just built a brand-new water filtration plant. We have the Crook-upon plant, which was built in the early 2000s, and we're in negotiations with the Air Force to build another plant. But the, the water mains, they're next. They need, they need the work. So this plan will allow us to, to make good progress and steady progress going forward. So with that, take any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I just have.
Go ahead. You can go first.
Disposal costs of the asbestos pipe. Is that figured into your plan?
So the asbestos will be abandoned in place underground.
Mr. Brown?
I noticed that you have this list of projects. Is that a prioritized list or just a list of things that need to be done at the end of the, at the end of the report?
This list right here?
No. All, there's a huge, long list of all the different particular items.
Not in the slides, but in the report itself?
Right.
Oh, the actual CEP report?
Right.
Yes, all that work needs to be done in the report.
Right, but I'm saying, is that a prioritized list or just a general list?
It's prioritized by phase one, phase two, phase three.
Okay. I have a question about the water quality issue. It appeared to be a line going to the Lawrence School. I don't know if that's accurate. I just looked at the map, and it didn't show clearly.
So that was, this document was created in 2020.
Yeah.
And recently just updated, but we're not done. The, you're talking about Hamlin Ave. Hamlin Ave was replaced. That was a water department job.
Okay, so that's already done?
It's replaced.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any other comments?
This is great work.
It's really well done and, and very thorough.
Very informative.
Very informative.
Do wish I had a little more time to read it, though. Maybe when we have something like this, maybe it could be sent a week ahead.
Is this on our website?
It's on the water department website, so yes.
This plant?
Yes, in that, in its entirety. There's a lot of appendices that probably weren't printed.
Yeah, it's like 340 pages. But really very informative and interesting. I would suggest to people that want to know about the water system, take a look at this because it's really interesting.
They're fortunate.
Yeah, very well done.
So this is obviously a, you know, huge implications here. We're talking about the quality of our water. We're talking about spending $3 million a year, basically indefinitely, and that's $3 million a year in today's dollars to be adjusted by inflation going forward. So obviously, we're not asking the board to make any firm commitments on a decision of this magnitude, and as Mr. Rigetto said, the, the plan is something that can evolve and be refined over time. Our, again, our goal tonight was, you know, to get this information to you, and certainly to, to welcome your feedback, and, you know, if not tonight, again, it's a big issue, so if you've got further input and feedback for us at future meetings, we want to hear that. We are going to be coming pretty quickly, if it's agreeable to the board, you know, we're, we're anxious to take a look at the water rates. So any concerns, feedback you have tonight or, or future meetings, please let us know.
And it sounds like you'll be back on May 1st. Is that correct?
Right.
So this is an ongoing conversation.
Exactly.
But this was a, a great start. Mr. Brown?
Just one more comment that I would, I was concerned about the map that showed the water quality issues of some of the pipes, and I would say that should be prioritized. I know you've got your priority list based on your three circle approach, but maybe those maybe should be taken out of order.
One thing I will say about those is we need to do a deeper dive because we're looking at work orders, and work orders don't always tell the full story.
Okay.
And sometimes, you know, things happen. There's a fire, and then the water gets dirty because, you know, the fire department pulled the main so hard. There's, there's a lot of different scenarios, but the, when we met with Tatum Howard, we made it very clear which areas were real problems and which ones were not.
Yeah. Okay, good.
We'll, we'll keep looking into it.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else from the board?
No, well done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very informative. Okay, we're going to move on to our presentation for a Okay, we're going to move on to our presentation for Affordable Housing Proposal 375 Sandwich Road. This is the first time, thank you, Mr. Rafferty. This is the first time, um, that this project has come in front of us. So this is an informational only, um, presentation. We won't be looking for public comment at this point.
So Madam Chair, um, I, I think I have a conflict here because my wife still owns property on Greenacre Road, which is an impacted neighborhood. Plus I lived there for several years and I've become friends with a lot of the neighbors who are going to be concerned about this issue. So I think it's probably best to recuse myself for this.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
My wife will cover for me. She's here.
Mr. Johnson, stop.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Would you like to kick this off?
Yeah, I, I would. Thank you. Uh, so the developer, uh, Dave Calhoun and Saxon Partners met with our land use staff group on October nineteenth of last year and described concept level plans to construct at that time. They were looking at three hundred to nine hundred rental housing units on three parcels of land containing approximately forty-three acres. The developer indicated the project would be permitted under forty B and that twenty-five percent of the rental units would be deed restricted affordable. At this meeting, staff raised concerns about water quality impacts of the project. Waste water superintendent Amy Lowell has discussed with Saxon Partners representatives several potential treatment options. Her preferred option would be a state of the art onsite package treatment system. However, I would note that even a best-in-class treatment facility would discharge a volume of nitrogen, which would require the town to pursue additional wastewater treatment in the Great Pond watershed to compensate for the added nitrogen that three hundred units of housing would produce. The scale of this project in a location, also now moving on to another topic. Uh, the scale of this project in a location outside of the downtown area is not consistent with Falmouth's local comprehensive plan, given the lack of the infrastructure and lack of services within walking distance. That said, we all recognize we have a housing crisis and a workforce crisis that this housing would help address. In your packet are an email message from Saxon Partners and a slide presentation from Dave Calhoun of Saxon Partners, which provide a general overview of the proposal. Saxon Partners seeks a letter of support from the board. And as the chair just mentioned, um, that is going to be taken up at a future meeting in light of the scale of, uh, the project and the impacts of the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, stop.
Good evening. My name is David Calhoun. I'm with Saxon Partners. My associate, Jack Lefel. Uh, we've been before several of the boards. We've also met with some of the neighborhood groups that were put together by different, uh, folks around town. The Affordable Housing Trust arranged for some things. Uh, we, um, have one of the larger parcels of available land in town. Uh, and we are apartment developers. Uh, we currently have projects, uh, in Maine to Florida, to Colorado, uh, to the Midwest. Uh, we typically produce what we call our Meric product, which is designed. Some people say it's workforce style housing because it's designed so that people can afford it. Uh, we do a very highly amenitized product that people don't expect to find in this market or in any markets. So that when they show up, they get a resort type feeling. This project that we're looking to do in Falmouth, uh, would be done under MAS General Law, Chapter Forty-B. Uh, which is in theory, it's supposed to be single stop shopping as far as permitting. We go to the ZBA. We're not required to come to the Board of Selectmen. We're not required to go to the Affordable Housing Trust. We're not required to meet with conservation. We are, we do meet with conservation, but we don't have any wetlands. But you're supposed to go to the ZBA and you're supposed to gain your permit. We don't particularly like that approach. We try to come to the town. We try to get as much support as we can, get as much input as we can. And the, um, story that's been circulating that we want to do nine hundred units is not correct. Uh, we have forty-two acres and the question came up very early on in the process. Forty-two acres, reasonable density, thirty units per acre. That's twelve hundred units. Would you like to do it as a developer? Sure. But what we want to do is we want to do a first project. We want to see how it works. We want to see how it's received. And then if that works, then we can start planning on the other land because there's a lot of things that go into planning these projects. And ironically, at the different meetings, the big question that people kept raising their hands on was how quickly can it be available? Well, surprisingly, it takes a lot longer to permit and design than it does to actually construct, build. Once we have our building permits, we can be ready for occupancy in twelve to eighteen months. Whereas permitting process can go on forever. So we're here tonight.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to speak to the board, okay?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and just turn your microphone so it does get recorded. Thank you.
We're here to talk to the board about support and cooperation. Cause during those neighborhood meetings and some of the other boards we met with, one of the questions came up was how much money are you looking for from the town? We're not looking for any money from the town. We're simply looking for cooperation. Uh, we're not looking to be going through an adversarial process. But with that in mind, uh, if you don't mind, um, got some quick handouts for the board. Just, um, it tells you a little bit about Saxon, a little bit about the site. And if you don't mind, I don't know if you have what we sent you. Is that available?
Did you send it to Diane?
Yes.
Thank you.
If not, we have a jump drive. Want to drop it in? Whereabouts to you? Oh, right here. Great. What Jack gets at, so you can see it. We have forty-two acres. A good portion of that was the gravel pit. And then we have twenty-three acres to the south.
You can look right down, right there.
Okay, we're just going to quickly, it's like, with Saxon Partners, we're based in the Hingham, Massachusetts. If you don't mind, if you want to see some of what we've done recently. I don't know if you're familiar with Colony Place at the intersection of three and forty-four. That was, uh, acquired master plan, built out, leased up. And is one of the most successful developments in Massachusetts, uh, in, I guess in the last thirty years. If you want to just move along here, I'm not going to tell you a lot about the people at Saxon, but I want to get to the project if you don't mind. Keep going, Jack. Slide on down. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. This is just quickly, you can see the, um, letters of support on other projects, uh, we have. Uh, and that's always one of our goals is to get the local support as we move through the process. Getting to this site, um, and we all know about the housing crisis. That obviously is a big issue and sat through many meetings where people raise the issue about they don't have a choice. They don't have a place to rent. Not about price. It's just give us a choice, a quality choice. That's what we're trying to do. And if you, can you slide along? I just want to show you the site real quick. Here's the site. Uh, and we have thirty acres that come off of Sandwich Road. And we're very, very fortunate in that we have very advantageous sightlines, uh, for development because that's key when you come up to the street. And the property, as you can see, is way back and then you have the gravel pit to the north. And the gravel pit is one of the items which we want to hopefully work with the town on because we understand you have a wastewater problem. You have challenges. You're planning to possibly do an ocean outfall. Uh, you're possibly looking at additional sand beds. You had several different sand beds around town that you are pursuing. Our engineers feel that a portion of our gravel pit might make ideal sand beds for the town, uh, which would enable you to take some of the loads off of Buzzards Bay. Yes, more loads head towards the Vineyard side of town. But it would enable you to move flows back and forth, clean water back and forth and improve some of the nitrogen issues. But wastewater is something that we would like to work with the town on. Uh, we would like to see if we can't come up with a solution that's better for everyone. Uh, from a wastewater standpoint and a water standpoint, large developments are very, very advantageous because you get a whole bunch of paying customers with one location, one pipe. You're not having to run pipe all over town and do that type of thing. But moving on, um, our plan is to do, uh, three hundred units. And we've been meeting with different groups from MAS housing to our engineers, our architects. And the site has some challenges. When you look at the site right here, you can see we have a major utility easement to go through it. So we have to look and see what we can put there, how close we can put buildings, where we can put parks.
Sir, excuse me, sorry. The, the audience at home won't be able to hear you if you're not in front of a microphone.
I'm sorry.
You, you can use a cursor if you want to, uh, help them point things out on the screen?
But, so that's one of the issues. So we've come up with, and we have very limited time tonight, but we've come up with, uh, Jack, do you have? A very, very early layout of what we're looking to do. This is layout of it and what we're looking to do is five buildings, um, to the rear of the property with a lot of open space, a clubhouse. We're not looking for a lot of waivers, uh, from the town. We're working pretty close to your height, but yes, we will use a, uh, need a height variance. And we actually, when you look at your parking bylaws, we really don't want to park to your regulations because the parking would just turn into an asphalt jungle and all the studies say we only need about one point three spaces per unit. But we're designing the one point six level. But as you can see, we're looking to get three hundred units. It would be, uh, hopefully, um, something that could be expedited through the ZBA. Uh, and we would be trying to construct it is within six months of getting, uh, zoning relief beyond appeal. The project includes such things as workspaces for people that work from home, dog parks, um, outdoor living areas, fire pits, all the no, normal things that you find in modern day apartments. So it really becomes an ideal place to live. One of the questions.
Uh, we have a question from a board member.
Sir, I can't quite read. Does that say how many stories those are?
Four stories.
So, okay. That's all, all of those buildings?
Except for the clubhouse.
And that's the clubhouse is on my left?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
One of the, the questions that, um, came up, uh, was a big concern that this would become short-term rentals. So, uh, in talking to, uh, Amy, uh, we expressed to her that we would be willing to make sure that, uh, in most of our properties, they're deed restricted and restricted by our rules and regulations, that we can't do short-term rentals. And if someone wants to sublease their apartment, uh, the only exceptions we typically make is for those serving in the military. Because if they're overseas for an extended period of time, we do like, excuse me, them to have the opportunity to sublease. But that goes through the management company. It's not handled by individuals. So it just takes some of the load off someone who served overseas. But other than that, the buildings will all have elevators. We, uh, focus on, um, all the modern day amenities you'll find that, for example, you can't get into the building unless you have your pass card. You can't get to the floor where you live unless.
Sir, I'm going to ask you again to speak to the board.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to ask you to speak to the board, please.
Okay. So, uh, that's where we're, we're headed with the project. We're here to get your support. There was nothing in the meetings with the different committees that were in the land use group that couldn't be engineered through or figured out. And the biggest thing was, you know, question that just keep kind, coming up time and time again. When can you do it?
You, you heard the recommendation from our wastewater superintendent, correct?
Yes, I met with Amy at her office. Yes, and we heard her recommendation.
Is that part of your plan?
There's, it's part of the plan. There's many plans. I mean, uh, if I'm not mistaken, just at town meeting, you just allocated substantial funds uh, to improve your wastewater treatment plant and your system. If I'm not mistaken, did that get approved at town meeting?
Yes. So there, there were two articles, um, and the, the article for construction funds was approved. And that will, um, provide funds to improve the existing wastewater treatment plant and to expand the use of, use of the existing discharge beds at the treatment plant. But that flow is all already accounted for before this project. And I would just note that, and I, make no mistake, I am not speaking against this project in any way, shape or form. I'm not speaking for it either, just identifying issues. Um, the wastewater issue is the, the amount of flow, as I said earlier, even with the very best onsite treatment, which is the wastewater superintendent's preferred option here, would add a volume of nitrogen that would mean, you know, we, we have a comprehensive wastewater management plan which calls for sewer-ing the Great Pond watershed. That design money was rejected by town meeting. But in order to, based on the studies that have been done, in order to meet the total maximum discharge limit for nitrogen for the Great Pond watershed, we need to sewer a large area bef, without this project. If we add this project, we will need to sewer a larger area. And I do say sewer because the, in this particular watershed, urine diversion won't remove one hundred percent of the nitrogen. And that's what we need to meet our targets according to the, the studies that have been done. In, in this area, we need one hundred percent of the nitrogen removed. So in order to accommodate this project, there would be added wastewater expense. You know, one way to address it might be a package treatment plant on this site, which is then connected to not only the new units, but also other existing units in the area that are not planned for sewer treatment right away. Um, so, you know, there are ways to address the problem, but it would entail, i- if we want to be sort of, to stay on track with our water quality goals, this project will create additional costs uh, in order to remove additional nitrogen to compensate for the added nitrogen here.
Thank you.
Question on that?
Yes.
You, you said that if there's a treatment plant there that we'd want to add other homes onto that. Could you explain that a little bit?
So there are, you know, the surrounding area right now is on septic and there is no, uh, in, in the next ten years, we're not planning, I, I believe I recall this correctly, that we're not planning to bring sewers to this area in the next ten years. So the amount of nitrogen that those septic systems are putting into the ground now is much greater than if we basically put in a collection pipe and brought that flow to a package treatment plant here to be treated to a much higher level than what a, a traditional domestic septic system does.
Okay, that's interesting. Thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, that was, that, you know, the type of pack, package treatment system you're talking about. Is that secondary treatment or is that tertiary treatment?
Tertiary.
Okay. And my follow-up is what about the discharge?
Well, that's, that's the whole point, right? The discharge, there, you know, the good news is that there's space for discharge here. But that's, that's exactly the point is unless you bring the discharge to an outfall pipe, there's going to be added nitrogen to the Great Pond watershed. Thank you.
Sir, is your thinking that if enough homes are added to a local treatment plant on site, then together even with the new proposed units, it would still be less than what's being entered into the watershed now with just septic?
Correct. If you could get enough of the neighboring properties connected from, you know, close to zero nitrogen removal to, you know, a ninety-five percent, you know, I think they're talking about potentially getting to a five percent, three percent nitrogen level at a state-of-the-art, um, plant similar to what we're getting at the, at the treatment plant. So that is theoretically possible, yes.
Thank you.
To go back to the chair's question, um, we plan to work with your DPW, with your, all of the engineers, bring our engineers into it, uh, and come up with a solution that hopefully enables us to build our facility not be a burden as far as nitrogen and address some of the area, area problems. And the engineering and the, uh, and the systems are there that can address the problem. Uh, our goal obviously is not to duplicate, uh, funds going out the door. So if we're going to build a wastewater treatment. So if we're going to build a wastewater treatment plant to serve and solve our own problem, we might be able to do that for 1.5 million. But that would make us happy, solve our problem. It doesn't do anything for the general area. So rather than doing that, we'd like to work with your teams to collectively come up with solutions that, as Peter mentioned, that might involve bringing neighboring septic systems to that plant. There's a lot of different things that got to be figured out as far as wastewater. That all goes to DEP because of the size of the project, and that's where we'd be working in conjunction with your team. But the goal is to obviously do it in a cooperative basis.
So, and, go ahead.
So what would, what would the next step be? Would it be to figure out the wastewater aspect?
No, wastewater would be the last step in the process. The first step is, because, well, you're shaking your head and you're saying, "No."
Wouldn't be my first step.
With all due respect, the way development works and the way mass housing works is first you get your zoning relief, because if you can't get zoning relief, you're not building anything. So it's the ZBA. That's the first step, to file for a project eligibility letter. We will be filing for a project eligibility letter within the next 30 days. Part of that process is to have letters of support, if they're available, from the municipality. That's why we're here tonight. We've reached out to the Affordable Housing Trust to see if they would provide one. We've reached out to the Chamber of Commerce, the different vested parties in the area, whether it be Woods Hole, the hospitals, the business community. The more the support you have, the better it is. So that would be our next step. Once we get that project eligibility letter, we file with your ZBA. And they have six months to have hearings, conclude the hearings, and 40 days after that six months, they have to have a decision recorded with the town clerk. Once that process is concluded, and sometimes it could be 30 days, it all depends upon cooperation. But once that's concluded, we have our zoning relief. During that time, we're working on a wastewater solution. The science is there, the equipment is there to do wastewater treatment plants right now that outperform anything that was in existence just five years ago. We can get to acceptable nitrogen levels. We can't get the town to an acceptable nitrogen level because we can't touch what's not on our property. But you can solve the nitrogen problem. It can be done. It can be done in a very efficient way if people work together. And that's where we're looking to work cooperatively. For example, when we first looked at going from our property to your treatment plant, you have capacity, you don't have a moratorium, so by law, we're supposed to be allowed to tie into the treatment plant. So we developed a plan, what's it going to cost us to get from our site to the treatment plant? Let's take it one step better. If we take our dirty water pipe to the plant, at the same time we open up our trench, why don't we put in a clean water pipe that brings clean water from your plant to the sand beds to the north, so that you could have an additional location where you could have sand beds? Gives you more opportunities, you're not using up what you have. Buzzards Bay Coalition is happier because some of it is moved out of their area. But those are the type of give and takes that can happen if we have your support and cooperation, and that's what we're looking for. We're looking to do it in an expedited basis without introducing, you know, many 40Bs. The first introduction is, "Hi, I'd like you to meet my project manager. It's attorney such and such." We're not looking to do that. We're looking to create a really high-quality project that the town will embrace.
Any questions, any other questions or comments from the board?
I think I, I realize I genuinely don't understand how some things work with ZBA, so I think I want to kind of do my own research on some of the ZBA stuff, or just ask Scott how some stuff works.
And I did not put on for a vote for a, a letter of support for tonight, because this is the first time you've been in front of the board. And I really did not think that we would have enough information to take a vote for a letter of support at this point.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that without hearing from the public either.
Any other comments from the board, questions from the board?
From the description, it sounds like the environmental impact will be minimal if the treatment is as sophisticated as you're promising. But I, you know, I think we need to be shown that that, in fact, will be the case.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I agree.
I mean, the, the big challenge for us is addressing the wastewater and making sure, and that, that seems to be, you know, the major challenges right now in almost any place you're developing is wastewater and water. You know, the water is the new oil. It's just limited supply. We've got to take care of it.
A lot of other communities that, these are more widely accepted and already have sewer that runs by them, and municipal utilities as well, though, right?
Well, we, we're okay on the water. We have water. You do have sewer within a reasonable distance, and we can put in a sewer main connection far cheaper than a municipality can. I think our costs, when I compared, are about 60 cents on the dollar. So that's where we're looking to cooperate with the town.
I looked at your, your project in Lebanon, New Hampshire.
Up by Dartmouth College, yes.
Yes, and would you be building something similar?
No.
Okay.
That project is all studios and one bedrooms, designed to service people that are working at the hospital up at Dartmouth Hitchcock.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
This would be ones, twos, and threes.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Johnson, stop.
Yeah, is there any information that you would like from staff or from Saxon Partners to bring to a future meeting so that you can consider a letter of support?
I think I would go back to Mr. Patterson's comment about, I really want more information, more specifics, more commitment on the wastewater treatment. In order for me to feel comfortable to, to move forward or to support the project, I need a lot more specifics around that.
With all due respect, that is not something within the town's jurisdiction.
You're asking me for a letter of support, and what, what I'm saying to you is.
But I'm being, I'm being, I'm being very frank with you.
I under.
We have to go to DEP, just as you do.
May I finish? May I finish? I'd like to answer your comment. I need to know more about the wastewater treatment on this project before I, as a select board member, could join on for a, a letter of support. You're asking us to support it, and you're saying, "But that's none of your business."
I'm not, no, I'm not saying that.
That doesn't work for me.
I'm saying the jurisdiction, the jurisdiction is with DEP.
I understand that.
Because of the size of the project. If it was under 10,000 gallons per day, we would be with your Board of Health.
So you could talk to us about what that means and what you would have to do to get through DEP.
Madam Chair, with all due respect, we've been having those discussions, we've been meeting with the people, everybody from your water quality group to your DPW, to your land use group, we're having those conversations. The reason why we're asking for a letter of cooperation is just that. We want to open up our books, we want to have our engineers, we want to spend lots and lots of money that people at Falmouth would not have to spend to develop these programs. But you do it if there is support and cooperation. If it's not going to be supported, then why would you do it? You just file for your 40B application, you go to the ZBA, and you get your approvals.
I, I understand that, but you're, you're asking the board, this is the first time you've been in front of the board, and you're asking us for a letter of support. And I'm asking simply for what I need to support, a letter of support for you. Mr. Patterson?
Can I just frame it a little bit differently?
Yes, sure.
I mean, the environmental degradation of the entire Cape, what's Falmouth specific with its 14 different estuaries, is a huge factor. And we, as citizens, want to make sure that we're not going to make it worse, and in fact, we'd like to see it made better. And so that's why we need to know about that. Do you understand? We know, we know there's a whole bunch of administrative processes and purpose and what have you, but for ours, from our perspective, if we're going to support this, we want to know that, in fact, we'll be better off environmentally as a result of your project.
We just want you to fully understand that before we came to you, before we had any discussions, we've been to DEP, we've been to Buzzards Bay Coalition, we've been to all the different interest parties to find out what we can do to streamline and enhance this process and make sure that their idea is addressed and they, you know, we've met with the gentleman and his wife who came up with a urine separation program. Doesn't work for our project, but doesn't mean it's not a good idea for other projects. There's all that type of energy that's going around the town, and the biggest problem is you, you're asking me to give you more information. What information and what timeline? And to bring information back to the chair and to the board, I'd like to respectfully request that if you need inform, more information and you'd like to meet and you'd like to have our engineers present and go through things, would the board be willing to create a subcommittee, one or two people, so you don't have to go through the open meeting law, that we could sit down in a conference room? But we could sit, we could sit down in an open conference room and hash out ideas and streamline it, because the, the environment is the biggest concern. But there's a bigger concern, the people that live here. And many of these people do not have choices right now. And the question that really bugged me when I met people at these different committees, they all were like, you know, "It used to be not in my backyard. Now it's now in my backyard, and I want it because I need a place to live, I need a place for my kids." And without the support and without streamlining it, the process just drags on. I mean, we were ready to go for a project eligibility letter almost 90 days ago, and we stopped because we wanted to come to the Board of Selectmen. We couldn't get to the Board of Selectmen. So the process that you guys are restrained by, we're not. We can put engineers on things tomorrow morning. You have to get a budget approved, you have to go out for bids, you have to review those bids, and then you can advance it. We can advance things with record speed if there's cooperation. That's what we're looking for, more of a vote of cooperation than support.
Anything else from the board?
You, you mentioned some of the wastewater things that could be done connecting to our wastewater treatment facility and bringing pipes back. We've talked about the package plant. Could you provide all that in a, in a document that we could review, just what some of the options are that you've been discussing with Amy or, or other folks, so we can have that on paper and just review? These are the things that you've considered and that might be options moving forward?
Yeah, or, or if you'd like, we could, you know, I hate to say it, but it's really nice to be able to sit with people and actually have the engineers there and have them address your questions on the spot. We'll come up with something for you. We can give you some information. We have really good, high-quality engineers. Stan Tech has done a lot of work for us, so, yep, we'll put something together for you.
Because it sounds like you've talked about, you've done some of that work already, so just, I'd like to see that.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Johnson, stop.
Would you like to have the wastewater superintendent come? The next time this is on the agenda for the board's consideration, we could either have a memo or have the wastewater superintendent attend to provide her expert guidance on the matter.
I think that would be great, and her recommendations.
Just one question.
Mr. Zelensky?
You said you had many meetings with the community and all of that. Do you have the minutes of those meetings? Have you provided that to us, all those conversations?
We were, we're invited guests.
Okay.
We don't, we don't take minutes. I don't believe the group that was in the school, I forget which school they had it in, but surprisingly, there were several, excuse me, somebody might know.
He's Falmouth.
Yeah, many of the people that were there were abutives to the property, and the overwhelming support is, "Get something done."
Anything else from the board? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
You want recess for 10 minutes?
I might. We'll take five. The board will move into recess for five minutes.
Well, we're supposed to go somewhere. I'm going to go to the corner.
Meeting of the Select Board back to order. We just took a five-minute recess and we are back to our business agenda. And our next business item is nomination to name overlook on the Coonamessett River for Betsy Gladfelder. And I believe we have Mr. Neto here. And, Mr. Neto, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Jessica.
I think Jessica was going to go.
And Jessica Rittenhour. I'm sorry.
Good evening. I'm glad you had a five-minute recess because I think my blood pressure is still quite high and coming down slowly. Jessica Rittenhour and myself are here tonight. Jessica's Director of the 300 Land Trust Committee to ask this Board of Selectmen, we're requesting that you consider naming the overlook at the Coonamessett Greenway Gateway Park in honor of Betsy Gladfelder. And that's what we would hope. I think it's a year-long process and hopefully this clock will start ticking tonight if you give this an affirmative vote.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, stop. Do you want to just comment, please?
Sure. So, under the Board's policy, the, placing this on the agenda tonight with the Board's consent would in fact start the timeline. And then a year from now, we would bring it back on an agenda to, and it's interesting because tonight we have, we're in both phases. The next two items on the agenda represent what the next phase of the process is, which is to designate a member of the Select Board to reach out to interested parties to gather information. And then the Select Board holds a hearing to consider final action on the naming proposal.
Okay. Thank you. So you want to vote or consensus?
A consensus is fine.
Oh, I think it's a great idea to get started.
I'd be very much in favor. I've just been so amazed at how much effort Betsy has put into this whole project. I mean, she's got quite a legacy to leave behind.
It's amazing. Mr. Brown?
I think we gotta get a picture of her up there, too.[681.01][681.01](laughter)
Okay. So you certainly have consensus to start the clock ticking. And we'll come back in a year from now. Yes?
If I may, excuse me, I just wanted to add a comment from the 300 Committee Land Trust. Joe approached our organization with this idea and the Board very gratefully decided to join in this request. This is a Town of Falmouth initiative. Betsy served an amazing role as the volunteer project manager, as you all know. But I think the words work ethic, commitment, vision, public service, Betsy has demonstrated all of that. So we're really thrilled to be able to make this recommendation and we understand the year process and we'll look forward to revisiting the conversation next year.
And do you know that she just was awarded two federal grants? So put raising money in there as well.
We thought.
I would add one more word. Tenacity.
Tenacity's a good one.
We thought we were going to tell you that tonight.[748.01][748.01](laughter)
I got, it got leaked before you got here, Joe.
That's it? This is the easiest question.
That's it? That's all you need to do, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Vote to designate a member of the Select Board to review the request to name the connector from the Shining Sea Bike Way to the Crossing at Palmer Ave onto Catherine Lee Bates Road as the Kevin Lynch Connector and to place a sign or plaque in his honor.
Bike Ways Chair?
And, Mr. Johnson, stop. Did you want to kick it off?
I mean, I think I pretty much said it in the lead-up to the last items.
Same thing.
The process tonight is for the Board to designate a member to, you know, in this case, they would be meeting with representatives of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee and any other stakeholders that they deemed appropriate. And we would then schedule a hearing to consider final action.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Catherine Jansen, Vice Chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. Just wanted to state for this item and the next one, it has our full support. And I wanted to introduce Leonard Johnson from Friends of Falmouth Bike Way to briefly say a little bit about these special people.
Many of you must, may very well remember Kevin Lynch, the late Kevin Lynch, who was involved as Chairman of the Bike Ways Committee for many years and was an ardent supporter of cycling in Falmouth. And what you may not know is that the first two extensions of the bike path from Locust Street to the Palmer Avenue overpass at Carlson Lane were spearheaded by Kevin. He was the one that got that ball rolling and made it happen. And so I urge you to consider this in a positive way. And I'll just go on to the next one while I'm here. Bob Fitzpatrick was involved also as Chair of the Bike Ways Committee. And he was involved in getting the, what we have euphemistically called over the years the Bob Fitzpatrick Connector that goes from the bike path to the Goodwill Park Crossing, which we now, we now have the light. And Bob was the one who thought that that would be a very good idea and led the way to make that happen. Again, he was ardent advocate for cycling. And I hope you'll consider this positively. And probably most important of all, the Friends of Falmouth Bike Ways going to pay for the plaque and the stone and getting it situated in the right place with the course, the approval of the DPW. So thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay. So let's go back to number five. Vote to designate a member of the Select Board. Anyone want to take that one?
That's my committee. I mean, I'll do it.
Okay. So I would nominate Mr. Zelinski.
Second.
Okay. I have a nomination and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And we have, the number six, vote to designate a member of the Select Board to review the request to name the connector from the Shining Sea Bike Way to the Crossing at Palmer Ave into Goodwill Park as the Bob Fitzgerald Connector.
Fitzpatrick.
Fitzpatrick. What did I say? Fitzgerald?
There you go.
Fitzpatrick Connector and to place a sign or plaque in his honor.
Can we get a two-for-one on that, Mr. Zelinski?[965.01][965.01](laughter)
I'll nominate Mr. Zelinski.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a nomination. What a good sport. We have a nomination and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much. And the clock starts ticking.[986.01][986.01](laughter) Okay. Number seven. Mr. Johnson, stop. This is to approve a request from Falmouth Farmers Market for a waiver reduction of the special event permit fee for the Falmouth Farmers Market at Marina Park Thursdays from 5/25/23 to 10/5/23 plus 11/21/23.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In recent years, the Board has voted to reduce the fee from $3,600 for the season, which is calculated at $100 per day, to a total of $200 plus $500 in in-kind contribution for the season. And I would just, and that in-kind contribution is assistance with the garden, the landscape garden at the Marina. Select Board Member Doug Brown had asked about fee waivers and how much of the fees have been waived over the course of the year. And we do have that information for you, thanks to Diane Davidson. So far this year, the Board has voted to waive a total of $5,513 in special event fees out of a total of $16,675.
So about a third.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. I appreciate that information.
I was more kind of concerned with the trend that I'm starting to see, but this is certainly a benefit to the community and I would say the fee waiver is in order.
I'd second Mr. Brown. Is that a motion, Mr. Brown?
Yes, I'm for approval.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the waiver for the Falmouth Farmer Market. Any other discussion amongst the Board?
I'm Lindsay Close. I'm from the Farmer's Market. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
I have a question, I have a comment. I was, Farmer's Market maybe last year, the year before, I saw that the vendors are now taking EBT at food stamps.
Yes.
Which I thought was really, really awesome.
Yes. Actually, that was one of the things that I, if I had a chance to speak, I wanted to bring up. We do have a SNAP program where our neighbors and community members with food benefits can come to the market and use their card. We also have two farmers that participate in the Healthy Incentives Program, which is through the state. And that actually rebates the purchase of fruits and veggies back onto their card. So they get those fruits and veggies for no cost to them and the farmers are still paid. There's a limit according to family size, but it's a very important benefit. We did over $13,000 in SNAP transactions, not counting the hip transactions. So it's an important benefit.
That's really awesome.
Really happy to have.
So nice to see so many local farmers and vendors that are there selling their stuff right directly to the public. It's great.
That's awesome.
And nice to add the hot dog vendor. It's great. You can have a hot dog while you're shopping.
Where do they grow?[1169.15][1169.15](laughter)
Actually, I will say, they use, they use local sausages from Lilac Hedge Farm, which is off Cape but in-state. They are pasture-raised meats and they have some great relishes from Peachtree Circle Farm here in Falmouth.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we did have a motion.
Fee waiver and free advertising.[1193.58][1193.58](laughter)
A motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Hope to see you all there.
Oh, I'll be there.
You will.
Absolutely. Okay. We will move on to... Presentation and vote to authorized grant application for Massachusetts Public Library Construction Grant for the East Falmouth Branch. Five minutes.
Hi. I'm Linda Collins.
Mr. Johnson, stop.
And this is Brian Stokes from the Public Library.
Okay.
And we ask for your authorization to apply for a grant for a Massachusetts Public Library Construction Grant for the East Falmouth Branch Library. There's an explanation in your packet, a two-page explanation, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have about that. We tried to be pretty thorough.
It was well done. Yeah. Any questions from the Board?
My only question would be, would you consider a design that kind of honors the traditional look of the home that's there?
Absolutely. We, we went to the East Falmouth Village Association and that point came across strongly that they want to maintain the Cape Cod look of their village and we appreciate that.
Great. Thanks.
I'm excited about this. I think it's long overdue. I think East Falmouth deserves an awesome library. And thank you, Linda, for putting this forward.
And it really does get used.
It does.
I mean, people do take advantage of the extra hours.
They do. It's very popular and the people in East Falmouth, especially in the summer, don't want to have to drive into Main Street. So they use it as a full-service library and we need to, to make it that.
Absolutely.
I'd move approval.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that forward.
Linda?
We can give you the signed letter tonight if you want.
You're good to go. Thank you so much.
Not that it wasn't in the bag or anything.[1323.33][1323.33](laughter)
I'll never say no to a library. Okay. Moving on. Request for variance to a sign code placement, Falmouth Public Schools placement of a temporary sign on the fence on town property 340 T-Ticket Highway. Mr. Johnson, stop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The School Department seeks approval to affix a banner sign to the fence in front of the School Administration Building. The town has approved variances for banner signs for a select few events in the past, including the July 4th fireworks and the Buzzards Bay watershed ride. This is the first variance request for this location, to the best of our knowledge. The event being requested that they're seeking the sign for is a school play, Mamma Mia. And I just, you know, the Board may want to consider whether this is something that you want to see routinely, the School Department be able to put banners on this fence, or if you want to look at this as something that's going to be, you know, only done once or twice a year. So that was just something the Board might want to consider before approving this variance.
I think it's, I think it's kind of a new, unique, I mean, they're really putting a lot of effort into this production. I've got tickets already and a lot of people are talking about it. I think it's kind of exciting for them. It seems like a higher-level production than what I've, or maybe I just haven't been paying enough attention, but it seems like they're really putting a lot of effort into it and I think we should give them a little extra advertising if we can, maybe even if it's not a regular thing.
Yeah. I'd agree with that.
Is the issue that it will be affixed to that fence? That's the sticking point, correct?
Well, I think it's, I think it's both size and fixing a banner to a fence is not allowed under the sign code.
Is not allowed. Right. Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I just would support giving the School Department, you know, a broader use of the property beyond this particular event. I think, see, the activities that the School Department is actually putting on to the benefit of our students and their participation in this is a positive thing. You know, it makes the schools' activities more visible to the public. And they do pay a fair amount of taxes to support our schools.
I would agree, Mr. Patterson.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move approval.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Excellent.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, stop. The remote work policy, non-union employees, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Human Resources Director Susan Lumping is here with us tonight. She and I worked on drafting this policy and we solicited input from department heads on it. This policy has the same content as the one bargained with one of the union employee groups, AFSMI Unit A. The Board recently approved the collective bargaining agreement with that, that same policy. But for the public's understanding, the policy provides a guideline for supervisors to consider allowing remote work on a case-by-case basis for individual employees. And I want to be clear, it does not create an employee right to remote work, but allows supervisors to consider remote work where it is deemed mutually beneficial to the employee and the department. Initially, we do not anticipate that any employees will be, will be fully remote. Each employee will be working onsite for a portion of the work week. And I am seeking the Board's approval of this policy. I think you've heard me mention it a couple of times. This is one of the tools that we're looking at to, to help with our recruitment and retention and be a more employee-friendly workplace.
And the Board has had the opportunity to look at that. Are you looking for a vote?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay.
We have seen this and I got a chance to read it, but one thing I didn't think of until this weekend when I was reading it again was, how, how will you incorporate it into the new hire process where so much discretion is to the supervisor? It would seem to limit your ability to make an offer during hiring.
Well, the manager, the supervisor and the department head would have to be a part of that conversation upfront so that anything that's offered to the employee would already have been approved by the department.
So you'll coordinate the hire with the department head and work out those details in advance?
The royal we. The department head, the human resources director, yes.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
My understanding is that this is sort of in real time so that if too much is being asked, you can rein that person back in and limit just how much off-site work they can actually do at home.
Right. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I move approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the remote work policy. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you for bringing that forward, too. That's a great initiative.
And thanks to Susan Lumping for her work on this, too.
Great job, Susan.
Moving forward, we have, we went through the consent agenda. Nothing was held. We had a couple of questions, so we'll move on to the minutes. Mr. Patterson?
Well, I don't want to disappoint you.
No, come on. Oh, you don't have anything? You will disappoint me.
Oh, no, no, there was one.
Okay, good.
But I don't think it's the first set of minutes.
I have one, too, that's not just in one location, but with regard to entertainment licenses, I see repeatedly that, I had made comments that the music is to be contained within the premises. And I think that what I maybe created a little bit of confusion when I said that, I know it maybe sometimes might not be practical, but you need to do that to the best of your ability. That's your goal, is to keep that. And so in the minutes, it's reflected each time as saying, "if practical." And I think that gives too much leeway to, to the applicant. I think it should say that, that was the intent, it's to limit it to the property line as best as your ability, not "if practical." So, several times it's stated that way.
And you said the same thing tonight?
Yeah.
The same way?
Right.
So can we, and can you tell us where, where is that?
Oh, it's mentioned a few times because it's in the first, second set of minutes.
Okay.
I'll look it up and I'll give you the page number.
Okay.
Well, I'm, actually, I'm remiss because the correction is with the first set of minutes. And it would be at the very end where it's sectioned as minutes. It says, "Review and vote to approve." It says, "Mr. Patterson voted to approve and release public..." No, I moved to approve and release public.
Good touch. Yep.
And with that, unless there are other corrections, I would move approval of the beginning minutes from Monday, March 6, 2023.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board?
Do you need me to find that? Or can we just say that wherever the entertainment license was mentioned and the conditions that I had mentioned would be that it was, the intent is to maintain it on the property to the best of the... the intent is to maintain it on the property to the best of the licensee's ability?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second with that condition and correction, correct? Two of them, one from Mr. Brown, one from Mr. Patterson. Okay, any further discussion amongst the board?
My problem is that both of them are kind of squishy interpretations. I mean, they're not definitive. The wording may be different, but the judgment as to what's, you know, acceptable and what's not, still kind of difficult. That's all. It's just an anything and I have problems with it either way.
I just feel like the language in the current minutes is enabling because it says, "if possible."
Yes.
Gotcha.
Sorry, it wasn't possible. We tried, but we couldn't do it.
Right. Yeah, good, good point.
And I don't think it was stated that way. And then, Mr. Patterson, you had the last one on page three, correct? You moved.
Correct.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes and release with the amended changes. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, March 27th. Mr. Patterson?
I may not have looked at them carefully enough, but I didn't find anything.
I thought they were good.
I thought they were well done as well.
They were comprehensive. So I, I would move to approve and release the public of the meeting minutes of Monday, March the 27th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to the, to approve and release the minutes for Monday, April...
March.
March.
March, I'm sorry.
Twenty-seven.
I've already moved on.
March 27th.
It's dangerous. March 27th, 2023. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, meeting minutes for April 3rd. Mr. Patterson?
I, I thought they were pretty clean and, and basically captured the importance of what was deliberated.
Okay.
So if you want to motion, I'd be happy to. Um, I move that we approve and release for public access. The meeting minutes of Monday, April 3rd, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Uh, this may be actually the, uh, the agenda that I was thinking of because we got the entertainment licenses here.
Got it.
Okay, so we can amend the motion for the corrections?
Yes, please.
Mr. Brown? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, is that it for our minutes? Yes. All right, Town Manager's supplemental report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to provide another update on the police chief selection process. As I mentioned before, we began with 41 applicants, including eight with police chief experience and 14 with the experience working in a community of a similar size. The consultant selected candidates to provide written responses to essay questions and conducted an initial round of interviews. From that process, five candidates were selected to participate in a citizen, in citizen panel interviews, which were held on April 14th. Scott Zelensky joined me for that. And that was followed the next day by a full-day assessment center run by the town's consultant on Saturday, April 15th. I was very pleased with the process. The citizen panel had great questions and observations. The assessment center gave us an opportunity to evaluate how the candidates would handle various real-life situations involving interactions with citizens and police department personnel. Human Resources Director Susan Lumping and I will be conducting a final round of interviews and reference checks next week. At least, at least the interviews will be next week and we'll be working on the reference checks. And we will announce the three finalists after the candidates have had an opportunity to notify their respective employers. We will then have a consultant, have the consultant perform a thorough background check before I bring an appointment to the board for confirmation. And I'm tentatively targeting May 22nd for that vote. And other than that, I just mentioned the upcoming meetings. The board is meeting again next week, May 1st, and then there's a bit of a break and the board meets again May 22nd, June 5th, then there's a two-week break. You meet again June 26th and July 10th.
Mr. Johnson, Staub, do we get a copy of your supplemental report?
I did not send this one out.
Okay.
But happy to follow up.
I always keep your reports. Thank you. Okay, Select Board reports.
I would just report that I attended the Cape Annals Municipal Leaders Association meeting with the legislative update last month and it was interesting to learn all the activities of the legislators that are, Mr. Xaros, Xaros was there and Susan Moran and a few other folks from other areas of the Cape, just to let us know what they're working on. And it's always interesting. We did have a little board meeting afterwards and we recognized that we really need to reach out more to get more people to attend the meetings if possible. So just a reminder that they happen once a month on Friday morning. Can't attend by Zoom if you're busy and you don't want to travel to whatever town it's in. And I stuck up for us because Julian Seer was mentioning a couple of towns that, you know, people should follow their lead like Provincetown and Antucket about affordable housing initiatives. So I had to speak up and say, "I want to get Falmouth on the good list" and told him about some of the stuff that we're working on. And he said, "Okay, you're back on the good list."
Thank you.
And I would also say that, um, just in an effort to try to maintain communications with South Coast Wind, I reached out to their communications representative person and I said that I just would like to have a conversation about making sure that she understands that the Select Board is here to listen and be receptive to any communications that they may want to have. So we're going to have a phone call tomorrow just to try to build some communication lines and, and find out if there's some method of communication that we can establish, whether it's monthly or quarterly updates that maybe she could provide just to ongoing informational updates because, you know, we see that there's mention of communications with public officials and I kind of want to talk to her about that, what those might be, so we can understand better, you know, where we're all at. Just keep communications open so that we know what's happening.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Patterson?
Actually, Doug Brown covered the one activity that I went to and it was a slow week last week because of school vacation.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm going to pass.
All right.
I, at the invitation of Recreation Committee, attended that meeting last week. The bulk of it was discussing the new pickleball courts. Not, not new, the pickleball courts they're redoing in North Falmouth. And hearing people's thoughts about the scheduling of that, which was fascinating to me. I don't know anything about pickleball, so it was interesting just to hear people's thoughts about a schedule versus not having a schedule and learning different terms. It was, it was good. That said, everything else I have is for future agenda items.
Okay.
Can I mention one more thing? Because now you just reminded me of something. So the meeting last month with the Sandwich Council on Aging Building, it's a brand-new 15,000-square-foot building. It's beautiful. It's got a gym and a walking course around the balcony in Sandwich.
Sandwich, okay.
Yeah. And Heather Harper, former Assistant Town Manager here, was there to introduce us and show us around the building and stuff. So that's quite a facility.
Yes, indeed.
So they have pickleball courts out front too and they were lucky enough, as Heather pointed out, to locate them in a place that doesn't have any residences around because they had that plan already in place without really thinking about, you know, the impacts. And then luckily, it's in a good place, so.
It's part of the so-called Golden Triangle, which is a huge commercial property area.
Right.
That does remind me of what I was, wanted to say about the Recreation Committee was there was a lot of discussion about Trotting Park and getting pickleball courts set up at Trotting Park so that there wouldn't be the issue of having pickleball near people. And so I don't know what the status of that is or, or what we can do about supporting that, but it sounded like a lot of people wanted that. People who play pickleball and people who don't play pickleball, just across the board.
Yeah, that is a, a key, um, part of the town's plan to address the pickleball concerns that we have. So the design funds were approved in November. So we have a contract that's, we're about to enter with an engineer to move forward with the design of pickleball courts and renovation of the old skate park.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Zelensky?
Madam Chair, as, uh, Staub, Mr. Staub described, I attended the two days for the police chief search. It was very informative, very well done. The procedure was well done. I also attended a bicycle and pedestrian committee meeting at the DPW with Peter McConity and his entire staff for almost two hours. So everybody was well represented there. He had every, every department head available. The room was full. So it was, it was a very constructive, very collaborative meeting. And then I did attend the Veterans Council Committee, uh, sitting in on that committee. And they continue to dial in on their Memorial Day festivities and how they were going to do that with, uh, we hadn't named the names of people we've lost during the COVID and we're trying to orchestrate that so everybody feels represented there. So that was very good. So other than that, that's my committee reports.
Thank you.
I've overlooked another one. The Beach Committee meeting. Thanks for reminding me about the committee meetings. And, uh, they are doing really well with their outreach and their hiring. They're way ahead of where they were last year. And knock on wood, I think they're on track to be potentially fully staffed this year. So that's great. They've really done a lot of work. The individual members have been going to job fairs and posting flyers and, you know, just doing everything they can think of to get people on board here. And they have resent us their request for their mission statement. And they did vote that they feel like it's important that the word representative be left in their mission statement because they're like, they feel like they do represent the beaches. So that'll probably be another discussion we'll have about, you know, whether that wording is critical for some reason or not. But they did unanimously vote to keep it if possible. Um, they're working on their beach huts. They've got two of them all ready to go. They're realizing quickly that the materials are very expensive and they've modified the design, not quite as fancy with the swooping roof, but it's going to be a straight roof, but they're really durable and rugged. The first two that they've built, they've already realized that the materials are so expensive, they're going to scale back on the floorboard materials and make a couple of other changes. They're going to make them a little bit smaller because the first two maybe were larger than needed. And given those adjustments, they think they can stay within budget and they're going to make a plan to build some more in the coming off-season. So they'll be really ready for next year.
Thank you.
Big initiative.
Huge. Select, uh, discussion for future agenda items from Select Board members.
I have a couple. I wonder if there's a possibility of having a general discussion about town meeting, like a town meeting recap. So there were things that were approved and things that were not approved. And I think a recap of, for example, the wastewater article that wasn't approved, okay, that wasn't approved. So now what are our next steps? Now what do we do? And then for some of the other articles that were approved, what are the next steps? I think, um, for example, there was a lot of feedback on the, the wind article. A lot of people saying they want more information, but maybe not understanding how they get more information. So kind of like what you were talking about, Doug. So I don't know if there's a way to have a general discussion or if we need to identify every single item to put on our agenda, but I would like to, to have a discussion about town meeting. And at our workshop on April 1st, we talked about Nancy, you and I, working together to host some meetings or figure out some way to get some input about putting potential bylaws or articles on town meeting warrant for November. And I'd like to get started on that. So maybe an agenda item to make sure that we're working in the right direction before we go off and work on it.
Okay, anything else?
That's it for me.
Sounds like a good idea.
I, in terms of, of the, the warrant article and, um, that was not approved for the, for sewer-ing and, and that, I think that the Water Quality Management Committee is going to be coming in front of us to talk about exactly what the next steps are.
Okay.
So, um, and then along that same line, the committee, um, I'd like an update on our May 1st, um, on the committee that I think is going to be going through the Board of Health on banning plastics. So if we could get an update on where that's at, and that would be really helpful.
So does it make sense to kind of go through the, the warrant and make individual agenda items for the different topics? Because that's multiple things instead of having a general recap of town meeting?
I think so. I think the articles that need follow-up from this board should absolutely be on an agenda item.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you could, I, it depends on how sort of thorough and detailed you want to be on the, on the recap. We could, you know, I, I've seen it done in other communities where you might just put a town meeting recap on the agenda and, you know, there might be four or five things that you want to talk about out of a warrant of 41 articles. But if you really, so I, I'm not sure if you were really looking to go through all 41 and say, "Okay, what's the next step on each of these?"
I, I think we can, we can pull out which ones are the ones that we know we want to have a conversation about, follow up on.
I agree.
Of the 41, probably like five or six of them.
Sure.
But it kind of sounds like they ought to be agenda items.
Individual.
If you want to go into detail on them and deliberate on them and talk about next steps, I, you know, somebody's likely to protest under the open meeting law.
Yeah, probably.
If you throw too many things in there and then you're just straying off of the agenda significantly. I know that's a big umbrella, but those issues are pretty significant individually in my mind.
So I guess I, I can go through and think about the ones that I know I'd like to talk about and share those and others. I'm not telling anybody what to do, but others might do the same.
I will say that our last Falmouth Water Stewardship meeting, folks were really surprised that that planning initiative didn't pass. And I think it's, we've all become a little complacent, thinking that, you know, we know we have our plan in place. Now it's time to start looking at the freshwater bodies and the other areas and took our eye off the prize for a minute, thinking that everyone was on, on the same page. And then all of a sudden, we got a little bit distracted by the urine-diverting toilet discussion, which, I mean, it's certainly, it's going to be, I think, a part of our, our plan, but doesn't mean we should derail our existing plan. So we definitely need to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, and I agree that we did take our eyes off the prize. I don't think we prepared as well as we could have. So I, I completely agree. And I think those are the pieces, I think that, I don't think we should dissect town meeting. I really don't. I think there are articles that the Select Board has been directed by town meeting to follow up on, and those are the ones I think that we should address, but I don't think we should, I don't think our scope goes further than that.
Yeah.
Certainly, the committee has to come together because we're looking at that for the November. Anything else for future agenda items?
Didn't write anything down tonight, but maybe I'll follow with an email.
Please. Okay, anything else from the board?
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Somebody second that.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, folks.
You guys falling asleep already? Jeez.